The second wall of the structure. That wall's got to cure, the concrete has to cure, and then we can strip form. So it does take some time for the walls to cure and then for us to start building the top. After that, we're going to build the earthwork and then the roadway. So at this point, we are currently early on in the process. If you want further updates, you're going to go to the Price Boulevard webpage.
Hello, I'm Jerome Fletcher, City Manager of Northport. I'm on the job with the Solid Waste Division of Public Works. Let's go.
Take yourself at home.
Oh, I love the duck. Look at that.
Oh, yeah. That got passed down through a few coworkers and then now it's ended up in this truck. So I was like, I want to keep it. So.
Well, maybe it's for the two-time driver of the year. How about that?
Yeah.
Oh, congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, you've only been here for two years, right?
Two and a half now, so.
Right.
Recognition is nice, but what he really values is the simplicity of the work. Meet Cole Sigley, a solid waste driver for the city of Northport.
You can put me on the same truck and same route, leave me alone for 30 years and it'll be done. You don't have to worry about it.
Right. It's very low stress. Let me do my job.
Yep.
I'll do it right. Come back tomorrow.
Yep, and then you go on to your next route. And then you just keep doing that. And then eventually the weekend comes, you enjoy the weekend and you're right back to it.
I know, right. That's how life should be.
It's a career he planned for early on, right after high school.
I went and got my CDL after I graduated high school and my goal was to get here eventually, so.
All right. Sounds like a man with a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. We appreciate everything you guys do.
He even shared a little bit about where he grew up, far from the Florida heat.
Because we were from West Virginia.
Okay, what part of West Virginia?
Uh, so it's north central, so like Clarksburg. It's about 40 minutes from Morgantown, which is where the university and the schools are and all that stuff.
I've been to Wheeling, West Virginia a couple times, up in the mountains.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm going to tell you, driving up those streets when the streets are like really narrow and you got to wind up those, I was like, oh my. And I was young, I was like 23. And I was like, man, this is going to be a problem.
There are some of those mountain roads where it's just, we like to call them kiss-your-buck turns, where you're sneaking through. And then you got to do that in the winter when it's icy in the roads.
Oh, I didn't want to think about it. I didn't want to think about it.
Now, I'll take this over that up there.
Any day.
And when the talk turns to hobbies, the trucks don't stop at work. In its spare time, it's all about monster trucks and RC cars.
Nice little basketball court right there. My son would like that outside of our house.
Oh, yeah.
That's nice.
Great place to run your little RC trucks, too.
Right, oh, yeah.
I got a bunch of those I like running.
Do you?
Yeah.
Oh, man, do you have the gas-powered ones?
I have the electric, I don't have the gas-powered. I've seen them.
I just want to like the ones that go fast.
Yeah.
It can be electric or gas, but how fast can yours go?
I have, so I have a couple that can go 40 plus.
Oh, yeah.
So they're the brushless motors.
Do you go race them somewhere, like on a track?
No, I just race around my yard. They're monster trucks, so they, you just take those things anywhere.
And they can jump over anything, right?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I rip them free to sand and the grass. I hit big jumps with them. I break them more than I do blades.
Right.
You take a big jump, you're like, all right, let's do this. And then you land it and it's like boom, it's done. You just broke the wheel off or.
But when the workday starts, the focus shifts to keeping the city running smoothly. Every collection has a plan, and behind the scenes, people like Mario Venditti, planner and scheduler for the city, help make sure it all runs like clockwork.
So basically, and I will check them one by one.
Right. Do you really?
Oh, yeah, I'll get out at every one and I'll check. I might take a section and do like three or four streets.
Right, but for the entire city?
Yeah, so here we have contamination, our first tote.
Right.
We have yard waste, which does not belong in there.
Right.
And we're going to end up tagging this and they're not going to collect it because of that.
Okay, but as I'm familiar with, you write on there exactly what the problem is.
Yeah, I can check off. There's a spot for yard waste on there that doesn't belong in there and I'll show you that.
The goal isn't punishment, it's education. Making sure residents know what belongs in the bin and what doesn't.
Good afternoon, everybody. Nice to see you. Today's Tuesday, November 6, 2025. It's 4:00 PM. We're in the city chambers and I called the city commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners present Commissioner DeValle, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emmerich, and Commissioner Petro is present for this meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Fuego, Assistant City Clerk Powell, Board Specialist Lindner. Uh, I don't know who we got from the police chief. It looks like Deputy Chief Morales is back there somewhere. And I don't know if Deputy Chief Hurley or Chief Titus, but they're here in spirit. Myra, how would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Righty. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Langdon, Second Vice Mayor approved the agenda. Pull that, spread on it, folks. And that passes 5 to 0. City Clerk, public comments, please.
We do have a couple. Sean Burrows.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, this is, there's a lot going on today, so I'm going to keep my comments short. Won't be quite three minutes, maybe three minutes and seven seconds. But, um, we've had this wonderful opportunity to recognize a gentleman today that's been an integral part of the community. And he has done some wonderful things to be able to not only bring attention to the business community, but also be a real big conduit to tying the business community and the city. And that's one of the things that I can honestly say that is a special thing for Northport is that not many chambers have that direct connection to their city. And a lot of times, when you're trying to get things done for the business community, you try to get things done in the city, there's a disconnect. And the wonderful thing that we do have is Bill Gunnen, as one of those individuals that spearheaded this many, many moons ago. And you can stop by the Chamber office and see the Bill Gunnen Hall of Fame. Yes, that happened this year, too. But at the same time, you can also see the amount of effort, the love, the work that he put into making that happen. Um, and that, in addition to that, he was able to really bring the chamber back from closing. So he's been with us for a long time. We do appreciate the hard work, the dedication that he's put, the many long hours that he puts into the, into the efforts of developing and building and continuing to foster that relationship within the community, between the chamber and the city. And definitely, Bill, I know you hate recognition, but you're going to have to suck it up real quick and deal with this because we're going to honor you this day. We're giving you your flowers before your grave.
Yeah.
So. Thank you.
Michelle Seaman?
I really could probably get up here and just say what he said. But I really just wanted to also say that Bill, at least while I have known him, has been a huge advocate for the city. And I'm just really proud today that the city is recognizing everything that he has done for us to stay connected and for the business community. And I just want to thank you all.
Jared Morgan?
Well, I want to continue. Hail Bill. I mean, hey. And I remember when the chamber started. I was there. And let me tell you something, it's come a long ways. And it had growing pains. Whoa, but thank you for everything you're doing. I want to bring up something else and maybe it's a good thing with all these kids in the crowd, too. Our boards, a lot of them lacking members, okay? And the fact is, the three times if you're absent, you're out. And I think it would be nice if we could put in there a little caveat, a little review board, because we've had some that have been like on the Northport University and has missed two meetings. And so then they only have one meeting that they can miss. And one guy fell and broke his back actually and still came to the meeting because they didn't want to miss the third meeting. Okay, we've had people with mobility issues that they couldn't walk into City Hall, so they couldn't be there. So, you know, maybe if we can put something in there because we desperately need one. And also, we have some students that want to be on boards. And you can only have one student on a board? Well, you know what? We have some students that definitely want to be on board. And look at all the wonderful people we have here. Maybe that's something to think about if we don't have enough adults on them, that they can be. Because some of them, they've got better ideas than I do, I'll tell you that much. And they're newer and they're greater. But we have some from the DeFi Northport High School, which is phenomenal, okay? And we have some from Pine View and that that really want to serve on these boards. And, you know, I hope that you can maybe look into that as another avenue. If we don't have the adults, let's get some of the students. But back to hail Caesar. This is your day, Bill, and you deserve it. Thank you for all you've done.
Stephen Harrison?
I didn't catch your name, ma'am, but I'm glad you did mention about the boards and whatnot. So hello, commissioners. My name is Stephen Harrison. I put in for the Charter Review Board, which you guys are going to be voting on the 18th. I feel confident I'm going to be able to do that. As I talked to you guys beforehand, I am a deputy. So, you know, working with the schedule and whatnot, it's every quarter, so I believe I'll be able to do that. Also, I'm almost finished with my bachelor's in public policy and administration. Afterwards, I'll be going for my master's in the same field. As I said, I'm a corrections deputy at Manatee Sheriff's Office. I've been there for over four years. So I started when I was 19. Excuse me. I'm also on the special response team at the sheriff's office. I'm a general instructor, I'm a defensive tactics instructor, and I'm a field training officer. But most importantly, I'm a young adult that wants to get involved with this government and wants to see this city flourish. I aspire to be a commissioner myself one day and I believe in the charter is where I start. Now, as I said, I do my research. The cities and boards committees are very vacant. As of yesterday, I did my research. The Art Advisory Board has seven vacancies. The Auditor Selection Committee has five. The Charter Review Board has four. The Environmental Advisory Board has seven and the Parks and Recs has four. A way to retain the people we have is we can change the attendance policy, just like many other cities have done in this state. We could either have the board or committee vote to determine if the individual's absence should be excused or not, or we can have you commissioners vote to determine if it should be excused or not. A couple of cities that already do this is the city of Pembroke Pines, the city of Fort Lauderdale, the city of Sanford, and the city of Fort Pierce. These four cities either have the board themselves vote on the attendance status or bring it to you commission, so it can be voted on. I think that our cities should mirror them to help with this vacancy issue. A few other suggestions is to post the vacancies on all our social media outlets. Have posters up in and around the city, like the library, Parks and Recs, and whatnot. And post vacancies every quarter in the local newspaper. Once again, I didn't see you, sir, at this meeting, but thank you for previously helping me finish my assignment. Thank you and God bless.
Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Moving on to welcoming new employees. Uh, City Manager, your item, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to our HR Director, Christine McDate, to announce the new employees for the city of Northport.
Good afternoon. For the record, Christine McDate, Human Resources Director. I'm going to be recognizing and introducing to all of you some of our newest team members. When I call your name, if you'll please stand. From the Police Department, we have Jonathan Bruso, police officer. Bryce Chandler, also a police officer. Dalton Gillis, police officer. Ruben Mora, police officer. Evan Kukasinski, telecommunicator. And McKenna Slater-Yon, also a telecommunicator. From IT, we have Amanda Shugan, Business Systems Analyst. Also, we have Alexa Jones, Service Desk Tech One. From Parks and Rec, we have a couple folks. We have Carolina Molidewski, a War Middle Springs lifeguard two. And also Isabella Mesmer, Recreation Attendant. From Utilities, we have quite a few. We have Nicholas Parker, a water plant trainee. Karen Converse, wastewater chief operator. Robert Howley, a water distribution operator three. Jay Murray, water distribution operator trainee. Scott Longbreak, a utilities locate technician. And finally, we have Trace Lukasek, a compliance coordinator. On behalf of the rest of the city, I just want to wish you much success in your new roles. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to proclamations and recognitions. Before we do, I believe we also have some additional public comments regarding the first item on the agenda, the presentation of the key.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Jill Luke?
I guess that's because I'm two weeks in after hip surgery, huh? I made it. Bill, good God, thank you. 15 years doing what you've done in the city. Can't thank you enough. I personally thank you for the Bill and Jill Show era. That was really cool. There's been at least 15 presidents that you have worked with over these 15 years. I know some of them could not make it today. So I'd like to, on their behalf, thank you for allowing us to work beside you in doing that, doing the job that you have done in this city for the business community and for the community at large. I wish your family was here. I would have asked Brandon, I would have asked Brandon to come up with me. Because I know when I asked him, who's the best daddy in the world? He'd say you. And when, and when I would ask him, whose daddy is the best in the world? He'd be shouting, my, my daddy. You've blessed us all, you've blessed your family. You've gone through some times that a lot of people would just quit. It's not you. Thank you for always accepting everybody where they are, at their point in life, their journey. You're always so open to receive and to work with anybody. It's a quality that's missing within the world these days. So shine on, Mr. Bill. We got another 15 years ahead of us.
Heather Runner?
That's Heather George.
There's kind of a running joke there because I was just married and Bill refers to me indefinitely as Heather George. So I knew that I would not make it through this without crying, so I actually went ahead and saved it on my phone. So today we gather to honor a man whose name has become synonymous with leadership, generosity, and the spirit of the community, Mr. Bill Gunnen. Bill is not only a successful executive director for the chamber, he's a visionary who's helped shape the future of our city with integrity, innovation, and heart. I might cry, anyway. His dedication has created opportunities, sparked growth, and inspired countless individuals and businesses to believe in what is possible in our community. Beyond his achievements, he leads with compassion. He supports local organizations, mentors our entrepreneurs, and shows up when it matters most, when many others don't. He doesn't just invest in business, he invests in our people, in neighborhoods, and in the future of our city. So thank you for helping build not just a stronger economy, but a stronger home for all of us. Congratulations, because you have more than earned this honor.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, commissioners, come on, let's get down first. Well, Bill, we didn't do a proclamation because really we didn't think it would do you justice. So you heard from some of your peers, some of your chamber folks. I just want to say from me personally, and I think I speak for my fellow commissioners here and the rest of this city. You are a special guy. You are extremely deserving of this. Your contribution to this city is pretty much second to none. You know, leadership is all about empowering the people around you to become better leaders. And boy, if there was ever someone who epitomized that, who was an example of that, it's you. You know, personally, you know, you have, for me, you have been a mentor. And, and I look up to you and the way in which you interface with your people and the people throughout the city. You're calm, you're deliberate, you're thoughtful, you're reasonable. Those are all the qualities in leadership that not just this city needs, but this whole country needs. So, you know, I can go on for hours singing your praises. See what I have to put up with here? But, you know, with that, I'm going to let, if any of my fellow commissioners wish to chime in, I'm going to let them before we present you with this key. But I'll tell you, you are special. You will be remembered for many, many, many years in this city, okay? And that's the little bit of immortality that we all leave. It's not how much money we make or how many things we have, or even how much we build. It's really what we leave with all those people who we touched and helped to make them better people. So thank you, Bill. See, they made me talk, but then they criticized me. So with that.
Calm down.
Calm down. Well, it is my pleasure to present you the key to the city of Northport. See. Normally, at every chamber event I go to, Bill Gunnen always makes sure he hands me the mic. I don't know why he thinks that politicians like to talk a lot, but it is now my pleasure to turn over the floor to Mr. Bill Gunnen.
First of all, I wish I could give this to all of you. I really do, so that's all. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, city of Northport. Thank you for the leadership, Jerome and all the staff. Thank you for this honor. I don't believe I deserved this with the other company that received this, like Mr. Gene Matthews and Brett Tower and them. But it is an honor. It is an honor. Um, I just, I wish all of you could have this because Bill wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you guys and gals. It's, um, everything we've gone through together as a family is because we did do it as a family. Not just the chamber, but the city. Been through a lot of commissioners. Been through a lot of, uh, city manager, sorry. Been through a lot of staff. But one thing constant is they've all been open-armed, willing to talk, listen, participate, support each other, all for the good of Northport. And that's one thing I want to push. I'm a native Floridian, so yes, I'm one of the few. But kudos goes to all the chamber members here, the residents of Northport, who, even though I'm a native, I was an outsider to Northport. You know, after 26 years in Boys and Girls of America, which I loved to death, the board at that time hired me, took a big gamble. He's like, oh, right away, you could tell it was a challenge. And I was high maintenance, man, you just knew it. And I was going to run them to death. Oh, I know, I know, I know that. Yeah, you did. But one thing I wanted to do, though, as I've done in my past, is whatever I took on, it was going to be the best. And I don't mean just the chamber. I meant this community. I've been in a lot of communities in Florida. And one thing too many of them don't do is take pride in their community. And I wanted to instill that, not only in the chamber, but everybody in Northport. I wanted the chamber to be Northport's chamber. Not just the members, not just the cities, even though everybody thinks we're part of the city. We're not. It was a community chamber. And that was lacking. That was lacking. And we wanted people to believe in the chamber and everything we were doing because many of our members live in Northport. And it was just an honor to be able to come into a community that accepted me. As I said before, boy, I am a challenge. I am high maintenance. And it's just, uh, but I've been blessed to have members of our chamber join our family. I've been blessed to have staff to work with. I got the best staff in the world right now. I get this, I get all this credit, but it shouldn't be just me. I run them ragged, too. You think I'm challenged to you guys? You should see it in the office. It's, uh, they are amazing. But again, there's one constant. I just want to instill this in our commissioners, in our city people. Be proud of Northport. Be proud of where you live. Because the first thing I remember I came in here, and I've heard this in many communities, oh, we're this redheaded stepchild of this town. We're the redheaded stepchild. Well, forget that. That's their opinion, that's their opinion. Right now, you need to walk around with your head up high and be proud of what you are and where we're at. And we've shown that. That's why the chamber is the way it is. That's why Northport's growing the way it is. It's because we're proud of it. And our young leaders out here, you see that. Be proud, be proud of Northport. I know it's easy. My 26 years in Boys and Girls of, the one thing I've heard all the time to kids, I can't wait to get out of this town. That's just common, that's just common. But you will come back because it's a great town. So again, I wish I could give this to all of you. You guys deserve this. City, you guys deserve this. Chamber is blessed to have a city willing to work with the business community. There's still a bunch of them out there that do not want anything to do with it. We're challenged and sometimes they don't like it. We are blessed to have great leadership. And together, we will continue to make Northport the best community to live in and not be considered a redheaded stepchild, but one that everybody looks up to. So thank you for being part of my family. And like Emily always says, I'm not going anywhere until they bury me to the coffin, right, Emily? That's pretty much it. But, uh, thank you, thank you, everybody. I love you guys, I really do. You are my family. And, um, God bless everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good old things. Do we have any lawyers out there? Is this Love Your Lawyer Day? We got a whole row. But they don't, you notice, they don't want to come up here and show themselves. Who's gonna read this?
Come on down. As they're moving down, whereas Love Your City Attorney Day in conjunction with Love Your Lawyer Day is a vital public service with members of the city attorney's office committed to ensure and navigate the complex world of law determinations done for the city of Northport. And whereas laws, law dates back to the Babylonian king... Why did you give me this one?
I figured you were the only one that might possibly get that right.
Hammurabi of Mesopotamia. The code of Hammurabi was one of the earliest and most complete written legal codes, a collection of 282 laws that established standards for commercial interactions and set fines and punishments to meet the requirements of justice. Control was put into place to ensure the law was enacted fairly, so if a judge was found guilty of judging incorrectly, they could be fined. And whereas Love Your Lawyer Day was created in 2001 by attorney and marketer Nader Anis Al Pia, which stands for American Lawyers Public Image Association, and is held the first Friday of each November with a campaign this year of no lawyer bashing or lawyer jokes for the day. Really, I'm not making this up. To be adhered to within the city. And whereas today's law codes are complicated, bringing an increase in the importance of our legal professionals. The laws are far more involved, and the expectations of conduct of business, building codes, and convoluted series of regulations can only be understood with lawyers' dedicated studies to master the legal code and how it relates to our city government. And whereas the city, the citizens of Northport should show love, appreciation, and respect for our legal civil servants. For one day, set aside the lawyer jokes, the subtle bashing around the water cooler, and remember that without these legal warriors, we'd all have difficulties navigating the complex world of law. We depend on and trust our city attorney and the legal staff to give their legal opinions for all aspects within the governmental organization. And now, therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 7th, 2025, as Love Your Lawyer Day.
So, I'm not gonna get, I guess I'm gonna go against the proclamation, and I'll make a lawyer joke. Shakespeare said that, you know, a thousand lawyers chained to the bottom of the ocean is a good start. And I never really agreed with that. Obviously, as I became an attorney, I worked with a very dedicated staff of lawyers who have dedicated their lives to a profession, which is really a craft, that you will continually get good at. You can never master the law, because something new always comes up. And in order to be a lawyer, and especially as a lawyer of these attorneys' caliber, you have to continually get better each day. And so, while I know there's a lot of lawyer jokes out there, and there's a lot of lawyer hate, remember that when you deal with attorneys, because these guys do that kind of work, and they do that work every day. Thank you very much.
I'm loving my lawyer.
Thank you for everything you do.
You gonna be the lone soldier today?
There you go.
All right. Whereas Geography Awareness Week is November 17th through November 21st, 2025. And whereas National Geographic Information Systems, GIS Day, is November 19th, 2025. And whereas GIS is an important part of geography awareness. And whereas the city of Northport is committed to expanding geographic information services to the general public in order to showcase real-world applications with GIS. Now, therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 19th, 2025, as National Geographic Information System Day.
Thank you. I can't believe it's that time again. So, I mean, we've come a long ways. I've been doing, this will be my 20th GIS Day that I've been doing for the city. We've come a long way as a group. I believe every single department has someone or multiple people that actually use GIS. So, this year, we're, we're planning on having our open house November 17th at the Shannon Staub Library from 1 till 4. We're actually, this year, gonna partner up with Charlotte County GIS, Sarasota County GIS, Sarasota County Property Appraiser, City of Venice, and even Northport High is sending some students to show their presentation. So, we would love to see your support there. We would love to see you guys come out and see how we use it. We're gonna have real-world applications that we use here and that we have available to the public. We're also gonna have drone demonstrations for the public as well. So, we hope to see you there on November 17th. Thank you.
Okay, Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week.
Before I start, I would like to say hello and nice to see you here, to my brothers and sisters. Semper Fi, young Marines. Okay, to the proclamation. And this is a long one, folks, sorry about that. Whereas each day, dedicated law enforcement records personnel serve the citizens of Northport, Florida by providing vital services that are essential to the efficient operation of the Northport Police Department and its records section. And in keeping our community safe. And whereas the men and women who serve as law enforcement records personnel are the backbone of the criminal justice system by ensuring accuracy, integrity, security, and accessibility of criminal records. They play a key role in assisting law enforcement officers in investigations, and they maintain criminal justice statistics. And whereas law enforcement records personnel demonstrate expertise in managing complex record-keeping systems that is crucial to identifying suspects, pursuing leads, and ensuring the successful prosecution of crimes. And whereas, along with acute technical skills, law enforcement records personnel are committed to and exemplify professionalism, courtesy, and efficiency in their daily interactions with the public, officers, and partners, public safety agencies. And whereas, Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week provides the opportunity to honor those who are committed to ensuring their role in criminal justice remains a vital part of law enforcement, and to recognize their many contributions to the well-being of the communities in which they serve. And whereas, the city of Northport salutes the Northport Police Department, Records Department personnel, and is appreciative of their commitment to service within this apartment, as important aspect of law enforcement and criminal justice in our community. Now, therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 9th through November 15th, 2025, as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. This is really an honor to receive this proclamation. And it's a great way, really, to share with folks about what the records department does, what that records unit does for not only our officers, we're there to support the officers, making sure everything is accurate, the crime data that goes into the FBI's database. So, we're responsible to review all that. Actually, last year, we reviewed over 9,600, over, over 9,600 case reviews. We also handled this great team of folks here. We have records technicians, we have digital records folks, and then we have record specialists. And amongst this group, we handled over 3,400 public records requests for police records. And on top of that, 2,700 requests from other law enforcement agencies. So, we're kind of like the liaison and the glue that kind of puts everything together. And we're really proud to do that. And we're really proud to serve you when you come to the lobby or you give us a call. And we serve you with the utmost dedication, understanding, compassion, and whatever your needs are. Because most people coming to get those reports didn't have a good day. So, we try to get them off and help them in the very best way we can. So, it is really an honor. I'm honored to serve and work with these folks. They're a great group of people. And we're honored to serve with such an awesome, exceptional police department and a wonderful city, and a city like no other, I think. So, thank you all, really appreciate it.
All right, final item we got, Deputy Chief. You got the floor, sir. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, Chief Garrison would be here, because this is a special moment where the Northport PD gives back to our community. Chief Garrison is up right now, up in Tallahassee, representing all Florida police chiefs at Cap, at the Capitol Hill. So, unfortunately, he can't make it here, but he sends his regards. So, this is giving back, and what we're giving here today is seizure money, okay? Seizure money is from those who want to poison our community or profit from crimes in our city and our community. And what our law enforcement agency here does is that we're very proactive in those that are going to poison or commit crimes and try to profit. Under the law, we seize their properties, we seize their assets. And then what happens is we give that back to the community. And we hold a zero tolerance in this city, then we make it very known that we will be aggressive. We will continue to stop those that are committing crimes and trying to hurt those and trying to profit. So, with that, the police department goes and takes a special pride in giving support to our stakeholders, our partners in our community locally, that support in protecting children and drug abuse. And sponsoring that and protecting our children, because right here on the entire half of this chamber is our future. So, it takes with the great pride that you're gonna see all these amounts of money coming back to our partners is all from criminals, what we are giving back. It's not, it's not taxpayers' money, it's criminals that we have stopped and arrested and took their profits from. So, it's with great honor here that we first start with one of our partners that we'd like to call up, that is very big in protecting our children, is our Child Protection Center. So, with that, I'd like to call up whoever are representatives from our child protection team. So, it is with, oh my gosh, give me hugs. She's grown up so much. So, yes, yeah, I got old, and she, yeah. So, the Northport Police Department will be presenting a check to the Child Protection Center here for $5,000. You can't cash that at the bank. There's totally another check somewhere. So, before you all, and those that are receiving the checks, please get with our Assistant Business Manager. Erica's waving her hand right there for the actual check. All right. All right, next, we'd like to call up another supporter of our youth. Big partner with, with the Northport Police Department is our own local here, Team Court. So, Team Court, could you come up here, please? It is with, it is with great honor that we, the Northport Police Department, present Team Court of Sarasota with a check for $5,000 as well. Officer Locata, could you come down here? So, Officer Locata is one of our school resource officers with Imagine Schools. Always been a big supporter, our, our youth is, is our future. Young Marines have been inspirational with Northport Police Department. Officer Locata always worked with them. He's always a big supporter of our young Marines, as we are with the Northport Police Department. So, it is with great honor that we honor, or we issue a check here in the amount of $1,500 to our young Marines. Want some of them in the photo yet?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And finally, we'd like to call up our very own Northport Parks and Recs for their D-5 program, our Drug Free Youth Program. So, the Northport Police Department, in support, will be giving a check issued in the amount of $2,000 to our Drug Free Youth Program. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Don't think I missed anything, commissioners? I sure do love these upbeat meetings. All right, City Clerk, any general public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And it is my pleasure at 4:46 to adjourn this meeting. And again, congratulations to you all, especially you, Mr. Bill Gunnan.